Everybody, please take your seats. And, once again, would you double check your cellphones? Make sure they're on silent or off. And, at this time, we will proceed with case number PD-14-13460-BOS. Benita Springs Car Wash. And we're ready for the next...
And the next witness is Scott Wyndham, who's been qualified as an expert in landscape architecture.
A witness? Is that correct? Is he? You said the next witness.
Witness? Yeah.
Is that what he is? A witness?
He is a witness.
Is that right?
He's an expert witness.
He's an expert witness.
Festifier, I thought. Okay. Welcome.
You're taking evidence.
Thank you. For the record, again, I'm Scott Wyndham with Wyndham Studio. And I'll be speaking to the landscape architecture components of this project. And looking at the site plan from a general, the landscape perspective, we've gone to great lengths to adhere to the requirements of the site development plan process, kind of early on here, and think some things through, and be mindful of the contemporary style of the architecture, and make a facility that really stands out in the 41 corridor. There's, it's a unique architecture, and we feel that the landscape is in-kind similar in a spirit of the design style. Couple of the notable items on the site plan. We're utilizing the Royal Palm as a primary site identifier in the series of LAs. So upon entering the site, you see this kind of upscale character of this palm that also kind of ushers the motorist coming into the property to use the facility with this identifying element. It's also in a very simple architectural style that relates to that, again, contemporary building that Ramon just reviewed with you. We are focusing on the buffers on the north, doing some creative things with heritage tree replacement, indigenous replacement trees, positioning them in the north buffer at a required 20-foot height. We're doing this in an effort to have kind of the largest vegetative mass we can along what is kind of the most linear part of this building by utilizing those large trees in this position. Additionally, to the east, though we're not required to have a buffer by code, it's been requested by staff, and we, the developer, as, in an attempt to be the best neighbor possible to the residential properties 700-plus feet to the east, we're proposing planting a consistent, what would appears like a buffer along this east edge to help mitigate this site from those residential views. Other things we've done is we have provided additional landscaping along the US-41 corridor, specifically concentrating a cluster of palms and a little more vegetation towards that northwest corner where the wash tunnel entrance would be facing 41. We're also, we've also introduced a significant amount of palms and trees in the vicinity of the east wash tunnel entrance. Again, that is all in an effort to mitigate the building itself from west views, from the neighboring residential, again, 700-plus feet away, and also from US-41, in what essentially is a fairly narrow footprint looking straight east or straight west, as Ramon kind of went through on the architectural review. Just a few notes on the plant palette. As you know, code minimum landscape design can be just that, pretty rudimentary, cocoa plum hedges, live oaks or hollies or cabbage palms here and there. We're trying to go beyond that, both in intent and character. We've introduced mullein grass as one of the feature plants that has a nice pink plume in season for color. We've also incorporated fire bush that has a nice red-orange bloom in the year, during the year. Even variegated arbor colla is just an accent plant at the facility itself. That's also going to lend itself and complement the architectural detail of the gold elements in the architecture. We also have proposed balnizia, which is a really fun tropical yellow flowering tree that will put color on, off and on throughout the year. The Royal Palm, as I said, is kind of the signature look for the site. And we've also incorporated dora phyllox, which is another native, the pigeon plum, satin leaf trees, so that there is a significant amount of native plants as well. Just addressing kind of the building elevations. Again, this is a view of the north side. And as I previously mentioned, we're utilizing the heritage replacement trees, these 20-foot live oaks on the north side. The intent of this is, again, long-term, these canopies will grow and begin to almost touch one another over time, you know, so that this entire north, the most linear portions of this building will be mitigated visually. And at the same time, we're satisfying the heritage tree, indigenous tree replacement requirement. The south facade and view, as the motorist is heading north on 41, is really, we see it as a lair view. So you've got the buffer of the oak trees, the satin leaves and the pigeon plums. Just beyond that, on the entrance median, drive aisle median, you've got the row of Royal Palms terracing towards the building. And then we have a cluster of cabbage palms to the west corner that further mitigates the building. And that median, one thing I wanted to mention is all of the interior islands throughout the facility, parking areas and vehicular use areas, are planted almost entirely solid. And the plants within those islands are the flowering fire bush, the native mullein grass and other planting. So it's, it's fully planted out, and they're meant to be complementary to one another and accentuate the site. As you can see how they interact with the building here. The east, the east facade, again, is this side of great concern for the residents nearby. But I think what's evident in this elevation is you can see the effort we're going through to begin to soften this building. You've got the cluster of cabbage palms off the corner. There's, there's a couple of, say, two pigeon plum trees. The buffer trees along the edge, again, not required buffer trees, but what we propose to help soften from the east are green buttonwood and Sweet Bay Magnolia. Now, these trees are planted in the detention area, but they're wetland trees and should thrive and have no problems with the wet condition. But we're being very purposeful in proposing evergreen trees rather than, say, bald cypress or red maple that would go to situus for this, you know, a large portion of the year. And this is all in an effort to soften. And I just wanted to reiterate from the architectural testimony that the canopy, this arched portion, is all, it's on that east end. The tower that you see would be 110 feet to the west, far away in the background. And this very small, this very small face, which, as you recall, is somewhat lower than an average home, residential home, would be buffered and with maximum plantings in that vicinity. The 41 side, similarly, you can see that we have added this additional cluster of cabbage palms, the yellow flowering balnizia and the live oaks are all kind of within the vicinity of the building itself. The tunnel entry, you can see, is mitigated, though there will be no, again, garage doors on that. It's just a metal accordion-type screen there. I also wanted to point out the canopy. And I know that it's kind of difficult to see here because that's the intent. The plantings will move along this canopy to help mitigate that even from view. And I wanted to just further say that, in profile, it's very narrow. It's almost like a line in space, because there's no, like, vertical wall portion to it. It's very much an open structure. So the trees around the perimeter are meant to soften that further from any adverse, like, massing that you're going to see and feel on that site. I think it's going to be more about the building and the way that the Royal Palm's kind of accentuate it for a nice, again, architectural use of landscape rather than just kind of the boilerplate, you know, meet the code idea. The last exhibit I wanted to show and speak to you about today is the treatment along the north and the south buffers. Staff had had concerns relating to, really, the tree's ability to be viable, given the steep slopes that could potentially happen on the, these edges. But what we're doing and what the civil engineer is proposing is doing that 15-foot slope easement. What this is going to enable us to do is elevate the grades, and this would be both the north and south property areas, and do a much gradual grade sloping off to the neighbor. And what this is going to allow us to do is those large 20-foot oaks, this is a section of the north buffer. It gives us the opportunity to have those oaks have a little bit more space for root growth. A five-foot buffer, which is typically what's provided for and required between commercial properties, typically will have shade trees along it. In this case, we'll do the larger trees. The easement allows the grade to be fairly flat. And what will happen is when the north property develops, they're going to have to adhere to the higher FEMA elevations as well. That fill will come up, and the higher fill on both properties will interface. That's going to give them opportunity, when they develop, to have a nice level grade for the buffer trees that will occur on that property. So we'll have kind of that combined, five feet on their property, five feet on ours. But we consider this kind of a creative solution for treating those side slopes. The alternative of which would be to have those slopes going very steeply all the way down to that native grade, five feet below, and, you know, trying to navigate a buffer through there. With the slope easements, we feel that this is a way that that can be mitigated.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The conditions recommended by staff, condition six B, little i, north buffer. It says, "The northern landscape buffer area shall provide at least a 10-by-10 onsite planting area to support each 20-foot tall tree." They talk about the fact that it's difficult to plant those trees in a three-to-one slope. I think you were just trying to address that that's not a problem. Can you kind of tell me why we don't need that condition?
Correct. What I was just going through is why I feel that it would not be viable or needed because with the slope easement, it allows for more root zone for those trees and will better interface with future development on the adjacent property and do away with the need to have the steep three-to-one slopes.
Okay. Mr. Voitak's going to hand Audrey and the clerk a copy of slope easement to both the north and the south. Can you tell me whether or not the 20-foot trees exceed the landscape requirements?
They exceed the landscape requirements by double.
And then, there's a recommended condition six B, Ii, east buffer, says supplemental trees or larger tree caliper trees shall be installed to create a continuous tree canopy. You want to comment on whether that's needed or not?
Sure. We, we have provided, as I was stating in my testimony, there's no actual requirement for a buffer there, but on staff recommendation, and again, in the spirit of being a good neighbor and providing an edge to what is, again, residential across the lake, 700-plus feet away, we have provided a continual edge of trees, green buttonwood and Sweet Bay Magnolia continuing along that edge. So we have essentially addressed that.
Okay. I, you talked about the fact that the internal areas are planted, like, there's the Royal Palm area at the front and the back of the car wash and on the front and the back of the canopy area. Are those the areas required to be planted, or are they just required to be open space?
They're required to be green space, but not planted solid. And we're trying to go beyond, above and beyond to have more planting in the areas, you know, vehicular uses like this. It helps soften and provide a greater, you know, impact visually and aesthetically.
So all of those Royal Palm trees and all those little planted islands are above and beyond the requirements?
Not necessarily above and beyond entirely. The trees are meeting internal tree requirements, but the use and placement and the extent of them is.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Any questions from the board?
Scott, it's hard to read on what we've seen here, your presentation, but are the heights called out on your drawing of the plant material? You might have already answered that question. I missed it, but...
They are. And I did want to point out, thank you for mentioning the heights. The basic code minimum height requirement of 10 feet has been exceeded in all materials proposed, 12-foot, 14-foot. And then the 20-foot is required as an indigenous replacement tree. But again, that positioning to help soften the wash tunnel on the north edge was purposeful as well. So everything's kind of bigger, and the Royals are oversized for what the code minimum requirement is.
So they go in at those heights?
They have planting, correct.
And the cabbage palms that are shown to buffer the tunnel seem to be drawn at, how tall are those? Better to see the end elevations.
Yeah.
30 feet.
Like, it's probably like a 14, 16, 18-foot clear trunk, something like that.
The clear trunk.
Right.
But the canopy, so you'd see through the clear trunk at the door.
Right. But then you have the understory trees, you know, of the green buttonwood kind of working in concert with them, so you get the mid-level and the high, higher. But we will cluster or set the heights of those palms upon initial planning to create that kind of three-height cluster that's going to be right in the middle, kind of, kind of as what's conceptualized there, of that canopy mass, being a 20, little over 20-foot top. Height at the top of that canopy, maybe it's more like 15 feet at the, at the beam line. So the intent is to cluster that vegetation or the canopy of the palms right on that mass, kind of as you see.
So the intent is to maximize the mitigation of those tunnel doors?
Exactly.
Thank you.
You've made a point about buffering from the, from the residential neighborhood to the, it would be to the southeast of this, of our property. And that cluster of cabbage palms, sable palms on this, that we're looking at now, would it not be beneficial to have, and maybe it wouldn't look right from a design standpoint, but I'm just asking, to further buffer the tower if you had a, another cluster of cabbage palms? No, back on that drawing that you just were, or that rendering. If you had another, it would maybe be out of balance from a design standpoint. But I'm trying to think about a cluster of other palm trees just to the left of that, maybe where that last Royal is, or the, that, right, right in that area, to further buffer the tower from the residences that are southeast of that? Those are the ones that are closest to the property.
To that, to that end, I would submit that the Royal Palm that's there would actually, I think, kind of accomplish that. Because, you know, the head's probably 20 feet in diameter. They're really canopy palms, what we would refer to them as. And as that grows, you know, it will soften and be associated with that tower piece, I think, from that position. The other thing to keep in mind is that that tower, again, is like 110 feet at the other end. So I kind of feel like that the perspective and perception of it, it's going to be less impactful than, let's say, the lockup wall that is all that mass very close to that rear property at its length, you know? So I think it may, that may accomplish what you're describing.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation.
Our next witness is Jeff Straw. He's been qualified as an expert in noise level evaluations, and he's here to address that today.
Good morning. For the record, Jeffrey Straw with Geasonics. The staff reported, indicated that there were just some general concerns about noise, and in the abundance of caution, we did some onsite measurements of noise. The two red dots, if you will, circles, indicate where we did some ambient measurements. And what we find is pretty straightforward in terms of noise that the South Tamiami Trail, the roadway, the activity there is going to be the predominant noise source as it exists right now. As you move further to the top of the drawing, back towards what would be the east into the residential areas, you have a large buffer with the lake. You have some offsetting distance to those residences, which are down in this corner, you have about 370 feet. And so what we looked at is, then, the major noise-producing components of the, of the facility. And overall, in general, we see that the traffic itself had an average level of about 59 decibels. That's pretty consistent for all the traffic over the, over the periods that we looked at. The peak level gets up to about 79 decibels, almost 80 decibels in terms of noise, which is associated with larger vehicles or you have a mass of cars, you have an intersection just a little bit further away. As all those cars release, that noise picks up. And then as the cars stretch out, it reduces back down. You do have a noise code, and that is one of the things that will automatically apply. And so what we looked at is to make sure that this facility would meet the code. And for commercial adjacent properties, you have to have a 72-decibel or less measurement, and that runs between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The hours for this facility would certainly fall within those. They're eight to seven, as I recall. So they would be in there. So the things that we looked at on the right side of the screen, then, are what are, what are the noise levels that are produced by the car wash mechanism itself? And the worst, if you will, the highest intensity noise is of the dryers. Now, in testing, those are about 83 decibels when you measure them out to the side, which is where your adjacent properties would be. The measurements were made at about 9.6 feet. As soon as you enclose those, which they are, the levels drop to 70 to 73 decibels just with the building alone. And so on the lower end of that, you're in compliance. The other is one decibel above your 72. But when we start looking at the distance to the offsite property, and we have not considered any of the landscaping that you just saw, the noise levels are 67 to 70. For the residential communities that are further to the east with the distance, we are down into the 55 to 58 decibel, and that meets even all of the residential criteria that you'd have to have, which is 66 during that same time period. The other thing that you look at is, remember those traffic levels on the other side of the drawing there? If you are at 67 to 70, you've got 59, 60 decibels for the vehicle traffic that's going by. That will obscure a lot of the outside activity, the, you know, the dryer activity, any of the other vehicle operations that are going on. And then certainly under the peak traffic level, that noise goes away. Because of the distance to the residential communities, you're also well within compliance to that 66 level. So, and the people that are even further to the east, looking up in here, are likely not to even hear the noise activity. The concern we had was at this distance, this closest point here, but with the drying facilities up in this end of the facility, they're, they're shielded, they're buffered by the building, and we would expect to see even further reduction of noise over that distance. So overall, the closest property line, and those are the immediate property lines, are well within the code. They meet the code. The traffic that you see, anywhere between 70.8 to 78.9, will obscure a lot of the dryer noise, and we don't feel that there'll be any issue with any of the residences.
Mr. Straw, can I ask you a question? Is noise cumulative, in other words, if I have a 70 and a festival generated by the road and 70 generated by the dryers, is that 140?
No, it's not. There is a method to add, you know, two noise levels like that. You end up with probably about 73 being the overall level. So there's not, and what we looked at, too, is that the dryers, the other activity is also intermittent in that, you know, if there's no activity, they're not running. So that you get a level that comes up, then it drops back down again. It's up and down, and a lot of that depending on activity with, with the road. The roadway is the biggest noise issue that you have out there. And that's unfortunately not going to go away for the neighbors or any of the commercial facilities. And, you know, as I talked a little bit earlier today, you know, you're out of season. When season comes back in, that traffic goes up. So our levels are taken here relatively recently. So that may even help obscure more of the, you know, the traffic, or the traffic will obscure more of the activity at the facility.
Okay. So if I understand your testimony, given the location of, of the dryers, given their orientation inside a building, given the significant distance to the residences and given the landscaping, in your expert opinion, will this use have an adverse impact on those residential neighbors?
Not in my opinion, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from this end?
Did you, did you consider the vacuum stations?
We did. We looked at those, too. And those are even less than, again, what the dryers produce in terms of that. So the levels attenuate, every time you double distance, you reduce about three decibels. And so what I've looked at on the manufacturer of those vacuums, that reduces as well. Also, in the, in the last drawing, which I noticed in the landscaping, you have got the architectural roof, if you will, over it, which helps contain noise. You also have, at the end of each of those, you have some plantings and buffers which will help reduce even further. But they all, because those have a lesser level to start with, and especially, as I recall, it's to the north, to the adjacent property, you have even greater distance, so those noise levels reduce even further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Our last witness is Josh Philpott, who has been accepted as an expert in land use and zoning.
For the, excuse me. For the record, I'm Josh Philpott. Here, on behalf of the applicant, you've heard a lot of testimony today about the site design, how intentionally...
Hold the microphone, close.
How it was intentionally designed, how it was intentionally laid out, how the architecture and the landscape exceed the standards. My role here today is to bring that together and show that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's compatible with the surrounding uses, and it meets the findings of approval outlined in the Land Development Code. So to, just to get started, I'm going to talk about the current zoning of the property. Currently, the property is approximately one acre, and it's Zone C1A. C1A is a commercial zoning district that allows a mixture of uses. I'll speak to that in a minute. To the north, the properties, both to the north and the south, directly adjacent, are, again, zoned C1A. The, to the north is the Benita Lockup. That's approximately 200 feet north. It's Zone Commercial Plan Development. It was approved, I believe, in 2007, 2008. The max height, just of note for that, is 55 feet. It allows for a boat storage facility along this edge to be developed at 55 feet tall. To the south, past the C1A property, is... To the south, past the C1A property, is Advanced Auto Parts, and that's zone CG. And CG is a conventional zoning category that is really the most intense conventional category for commercial and even light industrial uses in, in the Land Development Code. Across US 41 to the west is Benita Boat, Benita Boat Center. It's, it's zone, again, CG. And to the south of that is another commercial facility, zone CG. So there's a lot of zoning in the area that allows for a mixture of heavy commercial, industrial, light industrial, as well as some other retail uses. The future land use category for the property, and, and really the properties along US 41, is general commercial. General commercial is the land use category designated in the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan for retail, commercial service, land uses. The other commercial land use category outlined in the Land Development, or, excuse me, in the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan is the interchange commercial, and that's intended for more traveling public-related facilities. So I'm going to jump right in to some of the other uses that are permitted by the current zoning. A restaurant with outdoor seating, a massage parlor, and actually, one of those is, or a tattoo parlor is actually located a little bit south of this, a pool hall, and if you get a little reference to Music Man, right here in Benita Springs, and package store. So these uses are uses that would be permitted by right without having to go through a public hearing, without having to go do any of the additional uses, or any of the additional criteria. As you've heard, we've provided enhanced landscaping, we've provided enhanced architectural features, and none of those would be required if it was developed with any of those uses So going into the Comprehensive Plan Compliance, there's a narrative, and I believe it was passed out. There's Comprehensive Plan Compliance narrative that was submitted, that has been passed out. And just as I go through these, just for the record, staff, staff's recommendation does include that the application is compliant, or is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, but I need to touch on these just for the record. Policy 1.1.9 is, is important in that it covers shared access. And what it provides for is, there's a quote in there, and for proper, for parcels with insufficient road frontage to meet the above standards, and the standards of the intersection criteria that were discussed of 660 feet for US 41, to allow for lower standards for right-in and right-out connections, and requirements for shared access. And that's exactly what this application is doing, is providing a right-in, right-out access onto US 41. It can't maintain, can't meet the minimum separation requirements. And there is a, a copy of the agreement that has been submitted, where the adjacent property owner is in agreement. FDOT has been, we have been talking with FDOT through the permitting process. There is no major concern for the design or the access itself. Additionally, this, excuse me, this Comprehensive Plan Policy does not require an access road. The access road requirement, you'll hear a lot of testimony about today, you've heard some, and you'll hear more, but there is no requirement to provide an access road on this property. The requirement is for a shared access driveway, and that is what is provided. Objective 1.1, or, excuse me, 1.4 and 1.4.1 deals with aesthetics, architectural, and landscaping, as, has been testified, testified by Mr. Ace Avito and Mr. Wyndham. The architectural features exceed the Land Development Code, exceed all the requirements. But these policies deal particular, with, particularly with major arterial roadways, which obviously we're on. Other considerations shall include shared parking, parcel interconnectivity, increased landscaping requirements, increase the proportion of parking on the sides or behind the buildings rather than along the roadway frontage. We have met those criteria, as you've heard today. The parking is on the south side of the building, there is enhanced landscaping, there's enhanced architectural features provided, and shared access is provided to the property to the The general commercial future land use category, appropriate uses include a wide range of commercial, retail, service uses for residents, visitors, hotels, motels, office, and light industrial uses. Again, this is the future land use category that is intended to provide commercial and light industrial uses in the City of Benita Springs. The proposed use is absolutely, falls right within commercial and retail services for residents and visitors. It complies with this future land use category. The other, the other point about this is, this, as provided for in the analysis, this Comprehensive Plan Policy allows for a maximum height of 75 feet, which we, which the proposed building, as you've heard, is well under that. Availability of services, this is a requirement, one of the important parts of this is, it's required at the time of development order. We're at zoning process. However, as the evidence shows, public services are provided to the site. Water and sewer are located along US 41. There's adequate facilities to serve the demand of the proposed project, and we comply with Objective 1.11 and 1.11.1. Objective 1.3, again, touching on architectural and landscape standards, the proposed development exceeds the requirements for commercial uses. As you've heard today, the landscape plans that have been provided, provide increased plant material across the board. They provide buffers where none are needed. In addition to the buffer requirements, they increase the planting materials. In certain areas, there's an additional third row of shrubs to help shield the, the car wash entry and exit points. There's increased landscape, or increased tree plantings. One other point about the architectural, and Mr. Ace Avito hit on it, but needs to be emphasized, is that the Land Development Code requires that one side of this building meet primary facade architectures. Now, all building, all sides of the building have to comply with architectural requirements, which the proposed building does. There is one deviation, as discussed, staff is supporting the deviation for the long linear portion of the building. But the east, south, and west side of the building all comply with primary facades. So that's three facade buildings, or facades of the building that will meet primary facade requirements. The reason that's important is those are the sides that people are going to see. The south, as people head north on US 41, they're going to see the south side of the building. They're going to see the landscaping and that side. It exceeds the requirements. The east side from US 41, or, excuse me, the west side from US 41, the east side, the residential units 700 feet away are going to see a facade that meets the primary requirements, primary facade requirements in the Land Development Code. Moving on, Policy 1.1.22. This is a policy addressing when uses are, that are not necessarily compatible, but are developed along one side, alongside one another, when they share a common boundary with residential land uses. As we'll discuss, the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding uses. However, it does not share common boundary with residential uses. Again, the residential uses are 700 feet away. Compatibility is defined in the Land Development Code as a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in a relative proxy, in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion such that no use or condition is negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition. So just to talk about some of the uses that are around, this is to the north side, approximately 170, 200 feet, the Benita Lockup Facility. Again, kind of a larger building. Although it's currently constructed, it can be increased in height per the zoning regulations. To the west, this is across US 41, this is Benita Boat Center. So this is standing on, the, the east side of the top picture is from the east side of US 41 looking west to Benita Boat Center there. The bottom two pictures are standing on the west side of US 41 and looking at those facilities. And what you can see is that these facilities, especially the Benita Boat Center, provide for no landscaping, no architectural features that would be required currently. Toughy facility, minimal landscaping. There are some palm trees there, but really no lower mid-story to provide sufficient shielding as would we, would be required. To the south, this is from the intersection, just a little bit south, that provides access to the advanced auto parts. The top picture is at that intersection looking south, and one thing to note is that there, there really is minimal landscaping in this area. There are some shrubs in this area, but, and, and some oaks, but you can see the furnitures in the right-of-way, out, out front. Advanced Auto Parts is, is just to the south. It does have a code minimum required landscaping, and it's code minimum. I mean, it, it provides the landscaping required by the Land Development Code, but essentially that is all. The, the picture in the bottom right is from the west side of US 41, looking south, kind of southeast, and the, the structure, this is the tattoo parlor to the left of that image, and CVS to the right. Again, a significant amount of upper story trees, but relatively little mid and lower And because the importance of the uses to the east, this is actually from the, the lockup facility, the, the building to the east, or, excuse me, the building here is the boat storage facility, or the, the garage facility for the Benita Lockup, and looking east. And these structures along the rear are the residential uses 730 feet away, I believe was the distance, just to show that, the distance away. So compatibility, the Land Development Code provides for several different ways to address And every zoning category has particular criteria, whether it's for setbacks or architectural features and, and landscaping. As you've heard, and I keep reiterating, we exceed the architectural standards for all commercial buildings. We exceed the landscaping design standards for all commercial uses. And setbacks, setbacks is another important thing here. The setbacks for the commercial uses are fairly minimal. However, for certain intense uses, mostly heavy commercial, heavy industrial uses, there is a section in the Land Development Code for certain noxious uses that are known to be incompatible or cause compatibility issues, especially with residential uses. There's a special section in the Land Development Code that provides for additional setback criteria, and that's Section 4-2014, 2014. And it provides different categories for, for different uses. The most intense category includes junkyards, it includes landfills, heavy manufacturing uses, and the setback required from residential uses from those most noxious uses is only 600 feet. It's only 600 feet. The proposed development of a car wash is not listed in even the lowest category, which only has 100 foot setback. However, there is a section in the Land Development Code that specifically applies to the vehicular-related uses, and that's Section 4-1122, and that's for automotive, or that's for car washes, for gas stations, for convenience food and beverage stores, other vehicular-intensive uses. And that, all that requires is 25 feet setback from the structure to the closest residential building. Again, we're 700 feet away. The other requirements outlined in that, that specific section of the code is enhanced architectures, but those enhanced architectures are only required when it's a road frontage on a corner lot, when they have two road frontages. This is not. When it is on a corner lot, it only requires two primary facades. So the primary facades facing the public streets. Again, the requirement does not apply. It requires two at most, we're providing three, we only have the requirement to provide As discussed, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding uses, it meets the definition of the Land Development Code for compatibility, and exceeds the Land Development Code criteria So next, I want to hit on some of the highlights of the staff report for the recommendation of denial. I have the page numbers listed after each point, but the proposed use and its visual impact on US 41. What's important here is, is that other uses can be developed on this site that will not have to provide enhanced landscaping. They could come in today and, and get a development order and come, and put code minimum landscaping, code minimum architecture, no landscaping to the east, and be approved. The proposed site design of the building has the building narrow, the narrow side of the building facing US 41. In addition, the landscaping has been placed to minimize the impact of that building from, or the view of that building from US 41, which is, which is almost a shame because that architectural elements exceed the requirements. So what we're doing is not only are we providing a beautiful building, but we're providing beautiful landscaping to minimize the impacts of that beautiful building. Other uses, again, could be developed with, without complying with any of those. The visual impacts based on the linear design of the main car wash facility and the vacuum equipment area, again, the orientation of the building minimizes the impact itself. Car washes are linear by nature, that's, you have to drive a car through a tunnel, and, and that's what it is. But what, what could be approved is a long linear building, both north and south, and east and west, create a bigger impact on US 41, create a bigger impact east and west along the property, and again, only provide minimal architectural and landscaping. The importance of shared driveway access for the property and the property immediately south- south. As discussed previously, this is provided for in the comprehensive plan. It's actually even provided for in the Land Development Code. We are meeting the standards. It is important to provide shared access. It's required by the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, but also it's required by US, Florida DOT. The point here, I believe, is the access road. And what you'll find is that there's no requirement to build an access road. We're providing a shared driveway, which is allowed. That goes on to the next point, location of the cross-access for this property, meeting 100-foot separation connecting and the property immediately to the south. As you've seen and heard, none of the other intersections, none of the other driveways comply with that 100-foot minimum outer width separation that staff keeps talking about. They keep going back to this access requirement, this access road. There is no requirement to provide an access road. However, if we were to provide an access road like would, like other developments have provided, it would have to meet those requirements. But those requirements are not just the outer width separation. Access roads have additional criteria as outlined in the Land Development Code. They have to be a certain width, they have to have pavement width of, I believe, 20 feet, they have no back-out parking, they have to provide for drainage, they have to be located in a right-of-way. None of the other examples provided by staff will meet those criteria, period. The access point provided complies with the intent of the Land Development Code and provisions provided for the development. Appearance and viability of the landscaping buffer within the water management areas. You heard testimony by Mr. Wyndham. They're designed that way. In the wetland areas or the areas, the plant materials were selected purposefully to meet the demands when it is wet, to be viable. Design of the water management area and ability to, it's going to, there's no evidence to support that it will not. As a matter of fact, there's been an environmental resource permit issued by the South Florida Water Management District that shows that it will comply and will provide, handle historic Impact on the existing billboard and Burt Harris claims. This is a future issue when the development to the south comes in. The property owner to the south has signed the agreement to show the access point. He's seen the drawings. So, any Burt Harris claim, that's on the next property. And as you heard, discussed by Mr. Trish and Mr. Boydock, the alternative design is not as safe as the one proposed. There are also concerns of increased noise from US 41. And Mr. Strahl, you just heard him speak, that that's absolutely not the case. And there's no evidence to support that at all, provided in the staff report.
Josh, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute because I know you have several more pages of findings, and we have submitted those for the record, and I know the board thinks this. Can you just, in a summary, give me your expert opinion as to whether or not compatibility has been addressed and whether or not the Land Development Code and comp plan have been met?
Yeah. If it's okay with you, I'll skip to the conclusion.
Yeah.
There are. Just in closing, the staff report recommends approval, or recommends denial of the application. However, it does find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. It recommends approval of the deviations. The one deviation it recommends denial of is one that was submitted in objection or in protest, and that's the intersection spacing requirements or the outer width for the access road. It's not needed. There's no competent substantial evidence to deny, in the staff report, to deny this application. The, in my expert opinion, the proposed development, as proposed, is consistent with the comprehensive plan of Benita Springs. It's compatible with the surrounding uses, and it meets the findings for approval outlined in the Land Development Code.
Any other questions?
Any questions here?
Yeah, I had a question, and maybe you aren't the gentleman to address this. Maybe it has to be addressed by staff, but as you read through the Land Development Code, when you're involved with a change to existing zoning, which we are in this case, that has to be justified by certain conditions or circumstances that are unique to the property in order to facilitate a change in use, a change in zoning. Has your thinking addressed that issue?
Neil Montgomery, for the record, we have to prove by competent substantial evidence that we meet the findings that are required, we meet the Land Development Code, we meet the comp plan. We would submit that we provided competent substantial evidence here today that justifies the change in zoning. You know, as noted, we're in the general commercial, land use category in commercials is required, and there is no basis for suggesting that this particular use is not consistent with what's in the neighborhood. So, I don't know what particular finding you're concerned about. I stopped Josh from going through every single finding that has to be made because I was trying to be merciful. If you can tell me which one of those findings you're concerned about, we can go back and touch on that, but...
And that's at the, towards the rear of that presentation. Those are the slides I skipped, but if you, LDC Section 4-53 outlined the findings that must be found for approval of a rezoning.
And your request is to rezone this to commercial plan development?
Yes, sir.
Right?
And did you say that the lockup is CPD also?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, there's a history of changes?
Yes, and in fact, as Josh pointed out, to the south of us is a standard district, CG. You can't condition standard zoning districts, so all they have to do is meet code minimums. So, the C1A and the CG to the south of us can come in and do the bare minimum. The C1A immediately to the south of us, Mr. Arnold's here, and he can testify to that. They've submitted for a plan development on that property. And the only reason we're here is because a car wash isn't permitted, but because they did the zoning in progress and said, "We're going to make this use have to come back through the process, either a special exception or a plan development so we can look at the architecture and the landscaping," which clearly we have done and the staff has done in this instance. So, we have looked at the items that the council wanted you to look at as part of, you know, this additional process.
Okay. Were you going to say something?
For the record, Jacqueline Genson, just wanted to reiterate, and Mrs. Montgomery did touch on it briefly, was that back in 2013, 2014, when council asked us to take a really good look at US 41 and how it was developing, the lockup was pre that situation, and I think the current council has a different viewpoint of how that zoning was processed and reviewed, and they did not get reviewed on the first time. So, I believe they actually did have a recommendation for denial, and they worked through the process. So, what's important to note, and it is in the staff report, because the city did lose an economic driver, there is a sincere sentiment from council to look on how this corridor develops. So, yes, you have to look at the table as a stopgap measure. We did approve a similar process for how uses are approved, similar to the Benita Beach Road Corridor, where there's a special exception to plan development, but the city also will be having wall trap engineering looking at either this year or next year what uses we want on 41 and what criteria that we'll have to meet for this uses. Because staff isn't sure if this is a use that council really wants on US 41, just because the uses that are there might be compatible, doesn't mean that we want to perpetuate those uses. So, that's really staff's perspective on that, and we'll go into more detail during our presentation on that perspective from staff.
Thank you. Did you have something else you wanted to rebuttal to that, or?
Yeah, I think it's important to note, and I appreciate Neil. I know the planning part is kind of boring. We don't get all the graphics, and it's, but a couple of the items that we've discussed are the items that were in the later, the last little bit of my presentation, and one particular being the item that we just discussed. And it's called out in the staff report, and it discusses ordinance 1412. And 1412 was done to require certain uses to go through a plan development process. One important note, though, is that there's no criteria in ordinance 1412 that say what have to be addressed. It doesn't say. It doesn't say enhanced landscaping, it doesn't say architectural. It just says it has to go through the plan development process. If you move back to the initial resolution, and that's Resolution Number 14-022, that was adopted, that was the zoning in progress ordinance, or excuse me, resolution that came before the changes to the Land Development Code. It does mention, it does mention design criteria, and if I can find it really quickly. Here's exactly what it says, and if there's no objection, I'll read directly from it. This is Page 2 of 4, from Page 2 of 4 from Resolution Number 14-022, Section 1. Related to certain uses as listed in the section, and at such time, these certain uses shall be permitted only within plan developments or receive special exception on US 41 to ensure compatibility when the intent of the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. Creating a corridor and to ensure the plan development, or the plan use is compatible with adjacent uses, period. We've met those criteria. If you look at ordinance 14-12, which is the subsequent change to the Land Development Code that was done as a result of ordinance 14-022, there's no discussion on compatibility, there's no discussion on enhanced architectural, there's no discussion on enhanced landscaping. What you're going to hear is that the city is going through the process of hiring a consultant to look at these things, which you've heard today on the record, both from several members of the applicant's representatives. It exceeds architectural requirements many times over. It exceeds landscape criteria even for some of the more intensive uses, and we are compatible. The proposed development is compatible with the surrounding development. So, if compatibility is a concern, as outlined in 14-022, we meet that criteria.
Yeah, I think the summary is, what the staff is suggesting is, is we're going to adopt a new regulation, and we might have a new vision there, and we're not sure if you're consistent with what we may come up with. Well, they may be right, but we can't regulate people based on what we think we may do with some time, but we don't know if we're really going to do it. You have to regulate us based on what's adopted. And it's my understanding that, from Mr. Philpot, his expert opinion, we're consistent with what duly adopted at this time. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Any other comments from the board here? Staff, anything else? If not, I think this would be a good time.
Well, I think there's a member of the public that's here, just one.
Is there a member, is there anybody, any public comment? Please come forward. I'm sorry, are you not?
Can I touch one last thing?
Oh, you can let me go.
Okay.
Public comment.
Hello again, I'm Wayne Arnold with Grady Minor and Associates. Our firm represents the property owner, John German, who owns the parcel immediately south of the subject property. And just wanted to let you know that we're certainly supportive of their request. We've been cooperating with them in terms of the access easement, and we hope you can support approving the project.
I have one question, Wayne, if you could.
Sure.
In your opinion, are we going to be compatible with what you envision for your property?
We are. We're also C1A, and we're proposing a CPD with a variety of uses that include most from C1A with the inclusion of a restaurant-type use. And we believe that our use will be compatible with the proposed car wash. We believe it's consistent with the other uses that are not only there today, but as you heard the testimony, that some of those uses will be permitted by right under the current zoning. You've got a CPD, you have a lot of good conditions, you have some deviations that have been proposed, but that's part of the CPD process or the special exception process. You get to impose those conditions you would find appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have one question from Peter here, for, I think, for Jacqueline. Speak out into the microphone, Peter.
Hi, Jacqueline. On this here planning, referring to the...
Mr. Pastore, can you speak into the mic? Mr. Pastore.
The impact on the existing billboard and potential Bill of Harris claims, can you explain that?
There was a concern from staff that if the access point was to be approved as part of this master concept plan process, that Mr. German, if, you know, he were to stay with the property, fantastic, but if the property were to change hands, could that property owner come after the city for a Burt Harris claim because the access takes out the billboard? Also, another concern was, depending on the lease is structured with the property owner and the billboard company, could the billboard company come after the city? But I'll let Ms. Vance.
Audrey?
Thank you. I'd like Mr. Arnold to come back up, and I just want to ask a few questions as to compatibility of the site.
Okay. Mr. Arnold? He has...
Keep in mind, I'm not the lawyer representing the property owner.
You understand that. You're just an innocent bystander today.
A bystander planner.
I wouldn't go that far, but you heard some discussions today as to the proposed access location and where staff is recommending it, as well as where the applicant is recommending it, and have you reviewed the cross-access easement agreement?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And pursuant to that cross-access easement agreement, would your property owner have to relocate that billboard to another location on the site or another location in the city?
I think to perfect the interconnection to the south, Audrey. It's my understanding that the billboard will either have to be relocated or removed.
So, either way, the billboard would have to be relocated or moved when your property comes in for redevelopment?
That's my understanding.
Does your property, in your capacity as representing the property owner, did you review the proposed landscape plan that's being placed on the site?
I have seen exhibits that were part of the agreement, but I've not done a specific review of the landscaping.
Would it be typical of you to, when reviewing those plans, look at the proposed landscaping and how it might affect the existing billboard on the facility?
I haven't been provided with those details, Ms. Vance.
Okay. You're familiar with the term view zones and clear zones?
Yes.
In conjunction with signs. So, you did not review to see if there was any view zone issues related to the proposed landscaping and what is physically on your client's property?
No, ma'am.
Okay. No further questions?
Well, we've covered a lot of ground this morning. I think everybody's probably ready to take a little break, so it's 12:10 on my watch. Why don't we take an hour and, hour and five minutes, make it easy, reconvene at 1:15 PM? Is anybody against that? Huh? How much more time do we, how, staff has their presentation.
Correct. Our presentation could take 25 to 30 minutes. I don't really have it broken out as in detail as the applicant does, but it depends on your subsequent questions.
What's your pleasure? You want to break, you want to keep pushing forward?
It really has to the board's pleasure, but...
Board?
Just get it over with.
Get it over with? Okay. All right. Okay, all right. I was thinking, I was concerned that the staff was going to have a presentation as long as the developer did. So, having said that, let's.
Don't hurt me if it runs long.
Move forward. Give you another 17 and a half minutes.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Okay, I have a request to take 10 minutes. Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay.
And no reason.